First item is roll call.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Bannan.
Here.
Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Totten. Eric. Alderman West. I have a court.
Next item be invocation by Daryl Jones of Crossroads Church. All by his pledge allegiance for the cause of justice.
That's great. Now we give you thanks again for, man, what a beautiful week and an incredible day. And God would just give you thanks for an opportunity to once again transact business on behalf of our community, knowing we can't please everybody, but knowing that these folks have been elected and appointed to do the best that they can with what they've been given to work with. So as they attempt to do that, as they work on budgets and upcoming meetings and all those things, I just want to give you thanks for them, for their time, for their efforts, their energy, those that have assisted them, the work that they get, that they do that they don't get paid for, and so much of the stuff that they have to deal with that we just can't even, can't even fathom. So I give you thanks for them and their diligence and their service to our community. And God would give you thanks for our community and all that it presents. And we ask it now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty, justice for all.
Next item is perol the agenda.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Seeing no proclamations, we move on to citizens' participation. We ask that citizens who wish to address the board come up to the podium with a microphone and give your name and address to the record. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening?
Hello. Hey, Chris, so I'm in Southwest, and I'm in, um, I'm here to discuss the things that are coming. I'm already getting started on, um, we have changed the page to seventy-five. And last year we had seven hundred. And I don't want to do that. We were going to do that last year, and I kind of got a few phone calls from, from the seniors and I changed that.
What, sixty-five last year or seventy? What was?
Seven hundred.
What was the date last year, though?
Well, we're definitely getting five more than I can. I'm going to try that this year. Um, there are a lot of challenges about, um, two years ago, and I don't know what I was in last year to maybe do some moves and, uh, make sure that's going to go. Um, my cap out for the, for the thing is, there's twenty-four to sixty-five, you know, and I worked hard early, and I'm doing what this is going to be in this year. Last year I haven't seen that three year, and I want to change that, but I'm not going to do that because it's really, well, mostly none of it has been checked out, and we're like, you know, other things, you know, things all bad. Um, so we're going to try to, um, the salary, um, I'm kind of concerned because last year we had a bad weather, so I believe in, actually, I'm going to believe in maybe doing a little bit of things. Um, I think we have a hard time trying to move all of that, just four or five people in the middle of the month. So, um, do we have any questions for you?
Okay, next one. Penny, you said the Saturday before Christmas, um, so will that be the day before Christmas, Eve, the twenty-third, or are you looking at the sixteenth of December?
Well, it's back, um, we probably go into, um...
Okay.
And I'm going to do what we did last year, but I'm going to go versus on the other. I'm just going to put some volume to the game, the house, whatever, and it's safer than half of what it costs by doing, uh, never really a lot, but we had a bad night just calling that, and I'm sorry, but, uh, we didn't want to do that.
Now typically the board donates one meetings check from December, correct?
Yes.
It's related to that via resolution, right?
Yes, sir.
So if no one has any objections to that, I'll go ahead and have them put that resolution on the agenda then for coming up, so we can get that money to you.
Yeah, I want to do a little bit of, um, this year I want to do something like the , um, some of the, um, some of the, um, some of the, um, some of the, um, some of the , um, questions.
Do we have a budget amount for that, too, correct?
Um, yes. The budgeted amount, Mayor, is, uh, five thousand.
Okay. And you'll just need to invoice those.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Any questions?
Thank you for, uh, for your time to do that.
Who else wants to address the board this evening?
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, Scott Shafer, one zero zero six, out of the show board. Um, with the budget coming up around the corner, before I, I, I'm going to, uh, my reason here, my reason is the traffic officer. I feel the need, we need a traffic officer. It's been, we've had one in the past. It's ruined itself. Um, there were some issues, uh, that we had to, we had to remove the, the traffic officers, and, uh, I think it was time we bring a traffic officer back in, my reasoning. For, for this, is the simple fact our officers got their hands full. I mean, based on the top vacuum, I'm on the board, the officers, between the times they make arrests, when they bring somebody, we lose officers down here at the jail, and they have to make that whoever's in the jail cell, they just can't leave them by themselves. So we're pulling an officer off the street with that. And we have traffic stops, it takes, most time it takes two officers to be there. It's just, there's a number of reasons why we, why we need this. Um, the traffic officer, we put the traffic officer just doing tickets as far as watching the streets, and doing that, doing the, uh, intersection for our schools, the problem areas that we have. I think it'd be, it, it, and that would be their soul works, uh, um, excuse me, being a little bit nervous. Um, there's, uh, um, you know, there's talk that was brought up last week, that the officers need to pay for themselves. Um, that's, that's not the right way to go with this. Uh, and the idea for a traffic officer would not be right anything. And the reason I say that, if he's not right, or she's not right, take it, because she's doing her job, or he's doing her job. I mean, people are paying attention, they're slowing down, they're stopping, they're not running stop signs, and that's brought this issue up once again. Um, as all, as Alderman West pointed out last week, it worked in the past, and I, and it's, I think, a need we have. Uh, and so what I'm asking for out of you folks tonight is a vote to, uh, put it in budget and, and, to put it in budget this year, is what I'm looking for out of you guys, uh, vote, you know, if all possible. Um, I know, uh, there were some, uh, some other issues that Dale brought up about, he believes that the, that the traffic officer, or the regular officer shouldn't do, uh, that he thought they couldn't do it. I, I'd say, once again, I disagree, I respect your, your comments, but I disagree. I think the, the population's fourteen million to fourteen thousand, we're going to grow, we're growing it overnight again, that this is, uh, is definitely need. And, uh, one other thing I'd like to touch base on is the comments on the fireworks that were made last two weeks ago. You know, for, I, I, the fair has really taken off the last couple of years. It's done really well, and the money that you guys dedicate, like you did tonight, is, is, is really good. It, it, Chris Back gives the community something back. But whether you put it towards fireworks, or motor rides, or music, or whatever else, I think the return that we don't seek for that, we, we get a big return for it, and we just don't sit, I'll put that backwards, my fault. We, we, we do get a return, we just don't sit. And with the fair growing every year, uh, we're at the, they've added bands, and, and I think the fireworks are great, but, you know, if we're really, if we're, if we're going to worry about, worry about taxpayers being upset over that, then we need to stop donating money to the Christmas tree lighting, the employees doing that. I mean, it's, it'd be a nonstop deal. The, the candy girl coming up, the church parade girl coming up. You, you guys do good things donating money, and I, I don't think the taxpayer, at least myself, were that worried about that little bit of money you guys donate. We're going to do, we're going to do that when we cut them off, I might be, be there. But my big concern tonight is I'd really like to see if I make a vote, second, second motion, the second motion is, and, and put this in the budget this year, if all possible. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board?
Yeah.
Seeing none, move on to the existing agenda.
And I know we accept the existing agenda.
I've asked Alderman West to approve the existing agenda. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Alderman Arnold. Any discussion?
Uh, Chief, something.
Well, this is about the existing agenda?
Well, it's about the officers with something to know how many...
Well, why don't you, can you wait till you're, all of the, well, I'm just saying it's not right now.
All right. Well, he's putting it in the budget, I want to make sure we got, we're supposed to ask.
Uh, any discussion on the existing agenda?
Seeing none, all fair, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Seeing no previous business, move on to new business. We have a liquor license application for Constantino Enterprises Incorporated, due as price chopper number three twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I am going to talk sit to Ms. Ozenbaum.
So, um, Mayor, members of the board, we have Ms. Callie Constantino here tonight from Price Chopper. They have turned in all their paperwork for a retail and Sunday retail liquor license for the Price Chopper being built, as well as their, um, application for occupational license. Chief has approved everything. You cannot issue a liquor license on the first read for a new license, so it will have to come back next week as well. If anybody has any questions, I'm sure she's happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions?
Okay, so you need a motion, vote tonight, and...
Mm, I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right, entertaining motion is to approve the license.
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Alderman Bannan, does that have a second?
Second.
Oh, you want to do first, then you second, all right. Got that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Right? Let me back on the end for a second read next time. All right. Uh, seeing no additional new business, move on to no presentations or public hearing, move on to ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, the first order of business is bill number B seventeen dash nineteen. Second reading, it will be ordinance two four two one. It is an ordinance establishing the zoning of certain land in Green Valley as car one, single family, and C one, central business district, adjusted parking. Second reading, ordinance two four two one.
Mayor, I move to accept bill seventeen dash nineteen for its second read and make it an ordinance number twenty four twenty one.
I have motion, Alderman Arnold, to approve bill B seventeen dash nineteen for its second readings, make it ordinance twenty four twenty one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is, uh, the second read for property that will be annexed, um, just adjacent to Buckner Tarzney and Duncan Road, uh, planning and zoning. Held a public hearing for this on October third. Uh, the Board of Aldermen did the same and had a first approval on October ninth. If you have any questions, Mr. Murphy can answer them.
Anyone have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Arnold?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
West. Six zero, Mayor. Bill B seventeen dash twenty-one, second reading, will be ordinance two four two two. It is an ordinance amending the traffic code, schedule four, parking prohibited section of the City of Green Valley Municipal Code. Second reading, ordinance two four two two.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill number B seventeen dash twenty-one for its second reading, making it ordinance number twenty four twenty-two.
I have motion, Alderman Coleman, to approve bill B seventeen dash twenty-one for second readings, make it ordinance twenty four twenty-two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, again, this is the second read, uh, of this ordinance. It is to allow or to prohibit parking along the sections of roadway that are called out in the schedule within the ordinance. Uh, if there's any questions, Mr. Arroyo can answer them.
Anyone have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
West?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Bill B seventeen dash twenty-two, second reading, it will be ordinance two four two three, ordinance approving the final plat of Ray Lee Park. Second reading, ordinance two four two three.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill B seventeen dash twenty-two for its second read, make it ordinance twenty four twenty-three.
I have motion, Alderman Arnold, to approve bill B seventeen dash twenty-two for its second readings, make it ordinance twenty four twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, uh, this ordinance will approve sixty-three lots and one tract. Uh, they have both been approved through planning and zoning as a preliminary plat and final plat. Upon your second approval tonight, um, it will have its final approval, and Mr. Murphy can answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Cotton?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Bill B seventeen dash two three, second reading, will be ordinance two four two four, and ordinance approving the final plat, sidebar crossing phase four. Second reading, ordinance two four two four.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill B seventeen dash two three for its second read, make it ordinance twenty four twenty-four.
I have motion, Alderman Arnold, to approve bill B seventeen dash twenty-three for its second reads, make it ordinance twenty four twenty-four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman West. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, again, this is, uh, similarly like the previous ordinance, this is a final plat. Uh, it includes seventeen lots and four tracts, has been approved by Planning and Zoning Commission, and is up for a second reading, final approval by the board. If you have any questions, Mr. Murphy can answer them.
Okay, anyone have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Hammond?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Resolution R seventeen dash thirty-eight is a resolution by the Board of Aldermen, City of Green Valley, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Oak Grove Animal Clinic. Resolution R seventeen dash thirty-eight.
Sir, I'd like to table this till I can get into both facilities, because I've heard things, and I want to verify that they're, which one's accurate.
We have to have, we have to have it on the floor first, right?
Yes.
You'll, you'll have to make a mo, you need to go ahead, we need to re, we need to get it on the floor first, and you can table it.
Okay, for the room.
You, you have to...
You're the one that's reading this.
Uh, I move that we, I don't move to accept it. Bill number, uh, R seventeen thirty-eight for this first reading and bring it back for a second reading by...
What's the resolution, so you test the, read it, so...
I have motion, Alderman Totten, to approve resolution R seventeen dash thirty-eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion? Now, if you would like to table, it would be your chance.
I would like to, I, uh, I have a bad habit of checking out stuff, and I heard a lot of nice things from our animal control with no problems, but I heard other things, and I would like to check out, to be sure of where we're doing, and of course, I've already heard, what are you doing? We're supposed to shop locally, that's your always biggest breach, and here I'm, I said, no, I'll go check it out. But I want to talk with Dr. uh, down at the, at the vet's office, and I trust some of the people that I've heard from, including our animal control, but, uh, I'd like to verify before I still vote them on it.
I have motion, Alderman Totten, to table resolution R seventeen dash thirty-eight. Do I have a second?
No second, so we're back to the original motion then for the resolution?
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, the police department or animal control issued a, uh, animal care services RFP, uh, back in, uh, actually earlier this year, this memorandum of recommendation was issued on August twenty-third. In the, uh, the respondents list, the RFP included a response from Crane Veterinarian Center, Green Valley Animal Hospital, and Oak Grove Animal Clinic. There was a, uh, group committee that was put together to review and score the RFPs. Uh, that was Captain Palacheck, Christine Thompson, and Animal Control Officer Jacqueline Sparks. Um, once they reviewed that, the final score for the, uh, the three respondents were Oak Grove Animal Clinic with seventy-nine points, Kane Veterinarian Center with seventy-three points, and Green Valley Animal Hospital for seventy-two points. Um, attached to your packet is the responses from all three respondents, as well as a spreadsheet showing prices and, uh, information that was, uh, considered during the scoring process. If you have any questions, Chief Starbuck will be happy to answer them.
I have a question. And on the, um, the resolution itself, under background, it says that Green Valley Animal Hospital, that contract expired in twenty-ten, so for seven years, we haven't had a contract with anybody?
That is correct. It is, oh, go ahead.
Yes, I've heard, I've been here, I think we're needing a, there, I think there's a work system in the city hall that shows when contracts expire, like I have the same thing on the, uh, contract with the coaches. So it's time to be, we'll handle a check and say, well, I'm agree that this one, that's my...
That's one of the issues, that's all right, I was just going to say, that's one of the issues that we identified, um, on the PD side, is that, that, uh, the tracking mechanism that we would, that we would use for those contracts, uh, I don't want to say it wasn't always consistent, but contracts did not always come up for review or, or, um, renewal, uh, as, as they would in the, the process that, that we have on the administration side. Uh, once Chief Starbuck came in and started reviewing those as they come up for renewal, we found some contracts, like this one, have been expired and just essentially on a month-to-month basis, uh, for quite some time.
Has, has an attempt, I guess, Chief, has an attempt been made to alleviate some of these issues that they were having with, with the animal hospital?
Yes.
To no avail, yeah.
There is not been...
Yeah, I guess it'd be interesting to see what the original contract actually said.
Well, and one of the key issues, one of the three, was, uh, the Green Valley Animal Hospital, only had three cages available for animals, the average, I mean, your twenty cages on, and it's come to this point now where our animal control officer has, on occasion, taken an animal down there, and either, we call it actually, and say, you have taken it, or taken it, or it's on, or everything. Yeah, one that recommended has twenty cages, and so it's more reasonable for volume just to, you know, in addition to the, the pricing, which was much, yeah, very important.
Was it because of lack of space, that they didn't have space for, for more than three, or what, what was the issue?
That's how we set up, that's how we did it, so I...
They asked for thirty-gauge blue spring, animal control.
What, does it dogs if they, uh, if this one's full and they can't find a place to place the dogs, or cats?
Well, we, we can, for the last two weeks, we just have to take two out to, uh, all the times, after hours, I mean, it's, 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 it's...
Was that a specific requirement in the contract, how many spaces they had to have for each animal size, or whatever?
No, it's one of the criteria that we look at, uh, that's one of the many pages that they fill out, how much space do they have, what are market prices, what are markets, or, you know, how many animal dogs are in their charge, and there are certain protocols that they know, uh, about, they often, they'll, uh, period, I lost, dogs that they have offered for, uh, adoption, should not again, dogs that they recommended, they should, and I've been checking the vital machines, or, uh, solutions.
So this particular, uh, animal hospital, then, if the, if the RFP that went out said that we had to have ten spaces for each size, then they would not have qualified with their three spaces for each size, is that correct?
Right. They have three, even for homes, and three for cats, relax.
But if the criteria that's, that went out in the RFQ, did it say more than three, or what, what was that?
I have to go through that.
What was that?
I have to...
So is it three kennels total, or three kennels for us? So even Blue Spring, I mean, so, if Blue Spring brings three dogs in, then we don't have a spot at all?
I can't imagine that, I don't have, decided, I don't look down there.
That's why I wanted to go check.
So in the, in notes, Chief, uh, said a lot of the, a lot of the dogs would end up getting transferred, end up getting transferred to Oak Grove anyway.
No, I'm just reading this.
I have to go through the rest of the four pages. They basically fill in what, what resources they have, or they're just recommended, and I can't figure out, I'll go through this line by line, and then you...
That's all, thanks.
Sorry, ma'am. Just going to say, uh, in the spreadsheet prepared by the PD, it says available cages for impound animals, um, says Green Valley averaged twenty per month. Crane Veterinarian Center had fifteen for cats, ten for large dogs, and fifteen for small dogs. Green Valley had three for cats and three for dogs. Oak Grove Animal Hospital had twenty for cats and twenty-five for dogs. Just by going through the RFP quickly, it doesn't... Just by going through the RFP quickly, it doesn't appear that there was a minimum set out, but, um, the spreadsheet at the end of the packet does show, uh, the amount that will be assigned to Green Valley.
So if we don't know, uh, does Green Valley, is the exclusive contract with Blue Springs?
Um, I, I mean-
We don't know that. I'm just trying to figure out, is that on the three?
I would imagine, based off of-
Blue Springs probably-
Yeah, it's probably-
How's that mean, dogs? Uh, who else does, you know, who else Oak Grove has contracts with citywide?
Oak Grove, the DA, I know they have their, talking about their quality service. I know that we have used them for our, for the K nine, and the K nine for our, for our creek.
You have any other questions or discussion? See then, all stairs, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Baman?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Cotton?
No.
Five-one mayor. That completes the ordinance resolution.
Next up, city attorney reports.
I have the furthered report, Alvin, thank you.
Next up, city administrator's staff reports.
Uh, we'll start with Mr. Dade.
Uh, Mayor and Board of Alderman, just wanted to remind everybody that this upcoming Friday, October twenty seventh, is our, our fifth annual Trail Retreat event at Butterfly Trail Park. It's from six thirty PM to eight thirty PM this Friday. And I know that, uh, city staff's been working hard on, on pulling everything together. We've got quite a few vendors that have registered to be out at the trail and, um, provide candy and information about their business, as well as several scenes of the cities putting on, in addition to day rides and so forth, so. Anyway, just wanted to remind everybody of that event. It's a huge event for us, a generally get a big turnout. Uh, so it's really nice to have something like this to offer in our community. So anyway, hope to see everyone out there.
Sir Roy. Thank you. I just wanted to give you guys a, kind of a quick update. We're on the asphalt, Superior Bowen has been out, and, uh, the traffic circle's complete. I think most of the roads are complete. They still do have to come back. There's some cleanup in a couple of areas that they have to do, but, um, just wanted to let you know that, uh, at least the traffic circle has been completed, so, that was all I had. Thank you.
Chief Starbuck?
It was Saturday morning, I'd be in, uh, City Hall, Detroit, and, uh, then, then, some, I've been talking to, I've been talking to, uh, partners, we go to search, uh, and, 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 uh, Green Valley residents, or Green Valley employees, they have three bags of sacks for, uh, security.
Just have, um, three quick things, actually four. I hope you all are pleased that we'll actually get to spend more evenings together than we get to spend a park this week. So that was my first item of interest. Which brings me to the next one, our budget workshop tomorrow night, uh, the first, uh, workshop. It's, uh, October twenty fourth. Uh, based off of the availability that the board indicated in the poll, our following, our next budget workshop, uh, would be November first, uh, which would be one week following tomorrow night, so a week from Tuesday. I'm sorry, would that be Tuesday or Wednesday? I don't have a calendar. Okay, yeah, Wednesday, the first. Um, and then just, uh, a, a couple items of interest. I don't know if you all were able to make it, I just wanted to let the board know that we celebrated the twenty-fifth anniversaries of Captain Jeff Palacek and, uh, K nine Sergeant Hedger, uh, Scott Hedger, this last week. Sergeant Hedger had celebrated previously, but we actually held, uh, an event here at City Hall for them last week. So we wanted to congratulate them on their twenty-five years of service, and just take one more, uh, chance to say, uh, great job to, to both of those officers. And then the last item is that the, uh, twenty seventeen Community Prayer Breakfast is going to be held, um, November second, uh, which is Thursday of next week. It's from six thirty AM to eight AM. Um, they have, uh, a kind of a buffet-style breakfast. It's at Blue Springs at the Adams Point Conference Center. This year, the featured guest is gonna be, uh, Danica Fuiyamano. I can't talk tonight. Um, but she's gonna, uh, she's actually a, an associate principal for the, uh, Blue Springs Freshman Center. She's gonna kind of speak about her, her story, um, so, uh, the board, any of the board members are welcome to come to that. We will provide seats and tickets, um, if you would like to do that. I need you to, uh, either let Sarah or Kalila know. We, right, as of right now, we have a table that can accommodate ten. I don't know what the head count, um, is. Of course, we will fill, um, any remaining seats with staff members. So let me know if you would like to come to that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Next up, the Board of Alderman reports and comments. Alvin Arnold?
Wanted to congratulate our principal for his award. Apologize if I wasn't able to attend. Very honored to, to see you, and see you receive that, so, thank you.
Alvin Cotton?
I'll agree with Mr. Arnold. It was a fun night. I enjoyed the company that was there. And, uh, I, I really think that was a good night for socializing with all the people, and I got to be real quiet to people outside of Green Valley. Gosh knows, I shouldn't talk to any of them, but I did, right?
We can do our best.
Thank you.
Alvin Coleman?
Just wanted to congratulate our band, uh, for getting the, the fifth place out of sixty-six bands at the Bands of America Contest on the weekend. They did awesome, wow, that's their best result ever, so, just congratulations to the band. That's all I have, Dave.
Alvin Hedley?
Um, just want to thank staff for giving me the information I needed, based on a few emails that I had sent over, uh, late last week, and, um, thanks for dealing with the sign. I just got confirmation from you, actually, and Mr. Coleman on a conversation he had with staff earlier today, so, thank you.
Alvin West?
Uh, just one comment to follow up with what Shannon said regards to the Trail Retreat. Uh, the Green Valley Assistance Council is also accepting food items, uh, for people that come to the Trail Retreat. And last year, they did very, very well about getting those, so, uh, if we can let spread the word that the Assistance Council is accepting, uh, once again, food items, canned goods and that type of thing, dry goods, um, at the Trail Retreat also.
Alvin Baman?
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Next up, the mayor's report. Uh, I just have one thing I wanted to bring around with attention, and I told people I would. Some of you have probably noticed this conversation already, and that's dealing with, uh, trash cans and the removal of trash cans back from the curb. Uh, we've had, I know, several individuals, uh, upset with the city regarding, uh, warnings they've received regarding their trash cans, and Rick can chime in here too. Cur- is it twenty-four hours or twelve hours, cap, currently? Twenty-four hours. So, they ran the numbers for me, and we've given out over nine hundred warnings this year to date, but have not issued a single citation for it.
Well, I, I've noticed something on my street. We have had a changeover in trash service, okay? Even quaint Gathering had to call and ask them to get out there and empty her trash, because she's the business in that, and several houses, they were still left, and they thought, maybe, oh, it's because of Monday. It was the holiday that weekend, okay? I can't blame it all on the people. The trash service has to take a little bit of credit for that.
Yeah, and unfortunately, they don't tell us that they changed or they're behind, so, but, if the public lets us know, then, you know, it's, we just let it go.
Okay.
But unfortunately, there has been a couple of times that changes or that Ray has sent down notice, because she wasn't aware until somebody called, but no, he's actually called, and trash service sure enough, they didn't pick it up, or they were on, so, he does, he does try to mitigate that, but, uh,
No, I didn't blame him.
We don't tell us what they changed or something.
The reason I bring that tonight is, I didn't know if it's an ordinance the board wants to review, if we're satisfied with where it's at, but I just told people I would, I would bring it up. I mean, I know, the places like Blue Springs, I think they even go a little more extreme than we do, where they have to leave it by the house, the trash company has to go by the house, get it, bring it to curb, dump it, and then take it back up to the house. I think, hey, some trash companies actually charge more in Blue Springs also. The one they charge here because they have to do that, so, I don't think that's necessarily something we want to do, but, I mean, I know, I think, Ray, you guys, like, are kind of looking at some things, see, but I know a lot, out of the wa- out of the warnings we've issued, a lot of them are repeat offenders, we found, right?
Some of them are repeat offenders. I think a lot of it, too, might be, I think we've talked about making sure that people know it's a warning.
Yeah.
And I think the biggest issue that we've had complaints about, is people think that this is actually a GOS, it's gonna take this long. And so we looked at, the, the way the property maintenance code puts it out, and that we call it a notice of violation, you know, the actual term.
Is that what it actually says on it?
Yeah, and that's what we put on there.
You got the warning?
And so, we're thinking about basically having a written, where it still keeps that on there, but then it puts across it, but, you know, uh, because when we, when we, if we ever do do a final warning, we actually make sure it says, "Fine." Maybe red letters, so, I think maybe that might help some of the animosity that people get these things, that they know it's not something that's going to come to court right away, it's just, I think, and, uh-
This is telling them they have ten days with trash gear.
Yeah, and I could say, Ray, he gives them, in that case, you know, they, they do have to address it, but, uh, Ray will work with people. And that's not something that we want to go to court for, so, uh, but, uh, unfortunately, when people be caught, it's an issue soon, after addressing. But I think maybe that might help. We, we talked about changing the pattern in which we do it, do we do it by, by monthly, yearly? Some thought about if we were to do that, then maybe they give, we can run one, so we're still kind of looking for that. But I think maybe that, that first initial notice, making note of the door hangers just a little bit, I think, that makes a little bit of a difference.
I think some of the confusion also comes because I know, like on multifamily dwelling, we actually mail it.
Yeah.
Which I think may be causing the confusion, see, if they can, they get something to mail us more, you know?
Exactly. Typically, we mail a notice violation, like an actual GOS. But we do mail them, because we don't have, can't necessarily put those on an actual address, so we're just mailing it to that address. So that's what we collect and send that to, 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 so, yeah, I think that's, I'm talking to Ray, maybe we'll take that personally, just a warning, make sure clearly for, maybe, maybe, so, I don't know.
I have a question there. So, just in, in general, based on some of the earlier conversations I had, can you share with us, uh, the process? So, is it a matter of Ray driving around, saying, "Oh, there's six trash cans," or is it a matter of a neighbor calling and complaining, and then he sees the other five trash cans, and he has, he's obligated to do that?
We have, we have a few people that go around and let, make Ray aware of areas that have some violations. And some of the areas are repeat, people complaining about, many of them are. And so, Ray goes out, and there are other people that have that violation, and make the favorites of it, so we have, I think, a little, uh, he has gone at a regular schedule in certain parts of town, to tell you, guys, go visit them, to make sure you have a path, and, 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 talking about certain parts of the city. So, he's probably gone a little over half, and he got some controls in these areas that had ongoing issues with it, so. Part of it, or I can tell you, most of it has been citizen-driven complaints. But the other part of it is, you know, we add more to it, and you have to, we're going there, but, you know, then there's this like continuous process. Right now, weekly, he just goes through areas with continuous complaints on it, and then just says that, like, you're gonna sue us for violation, typically with a door hanger, in most cases. So that's how it starts. Usually people call, usually people, they don't even have time for it, and so, it's not an issue. And we really haven't had any, we just refuse to do it. And in many cases, if you have people that left it there, forgot about it, a few reasons, or the trash company will pick up. So, again, they just need to let us know that, and if there's any inclination that that's a possibility, we're gonna call the trash company and ask them to make sure, to make it, that, that, that's really the process they need to make sure.
So why would it just stems from good neighbors, you're saying? I said it from Texas.
I think it sounds like we're, yeah, doing some stuff with it, so.
And, and, I like, I, we've only given warnings, only given, uh, wishes. I think you're on something there, looking at the verbiage of how you're notifying people. Something that's a little friendly or on the first issue there, I think would go along with, to, to, hey, this is just a firm reminder, if you are in violation, please try to get your trash can back. But then, I think that would go along with, making sure a lot of this, good part of it.
Uh, I've nothing additional. Uh, we do have a need for an executive session for items under personnel. Alvin, entertain a motion immediately during the executive session.
So moved.
Question, Alvin Arnold, second, Alvin Coleman. Need discussion?
See then, all stairs, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Alvin Arnold?
Yes.
Alvin Cotton?
Yes.
Alvin Coleman?
Yes.
Alvin Hedley?
Yes.
Alvin West?
Yes.
Alvin Baman? Alright, well, during the executive session.